Of what we've been up to for the past, I'd say about a month and a half. In Greenfield and then also, also just around the district in general. And then we'll launch into the questions because that's really what we're here to hear from you. I know you're, you're here to hear from us, but we're here to hear from you. So yeah, so I guess we'll get it started. You want to introduce yourself, Laura?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Excited to meet everybody. My name is Laura Byko and I am working as a full-time aide in Councilmember Warwick's office. My background, before this, I was working for Just Harvest, an anti-hunger nonprofit in Pittsburgh. I've done a lot of campaign work before that. I went to Point Park for journalism. And I'm super excited to be here. It's been a really exciting first month or so. I'm excited for Barb to talk about what we've been doing. And if you call the office, it will be most likely me who is picking up. So I hope you'll be cheerful when you call. I'll do my best to be also. Pass it off to Addie.
Hello. I know many of you as a neighbor, literally immediately next door here. My name is Addie Lord. I am a part-time aide for Barb's office, largely helping with some of the deeper data and systems and processes of the office and getting us squared away as best I can in navigating a lot of the municipal intricacies of which there are many. So similar to Laura, I do not answer the phone as often as Laura does, but you might contact the office and hear from any one of us. The District 5 email address, district5@pittsburghpa.gov comes to all of us in the office, including Barb. So it's a great way to make sure that you get a response from, from us and make sure that we are all paying attention to your voices, which is really important to us. So thank you so much for coming. It is exciting to see this engagement. I appreciate you all being here.
Yeah, great. Do you want to soak?
Hi, Dr. Diane Hobson. Public engagement for the, for City Council. I work with all nine City Council people. But we're excited about four of our newest member of our City Council. We help them in whatever they're doing in the community. Our job is to help her engage with you. And so we're excited about just being able to work with all of our council people and to meet the people in our city. It's a great thing. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Melissa Rosser, public engagement specialist with City Council. We have nine bosses. We're here to assist our councilwoman and we like to engage with everyone. And my specific duty, job, I have these comment cards that I pass out in every community meeting that I would like for your comments, your concerns, your ideas to share with us. I love them and I share them with all of the council people. People, I'm the data-driven person. But if you don't feel comfortable, if you don't want to ask questions for everyone, we also would like you to ask questions. So if I'll be passing these out and share your ideas with us or anything else that you would like.
Thanks, Melissa.
Great. So, and then, yeah, so a few words from the GCA.
Sure. Hi, I'm Katherine Adams. I live on Hazelwood Avenue and I volunteer with the GCA. I'm the secretary on the board and I also work with the Planning, Transportation and Development Group. So just a few words. I first really want to say thank you, Barb, for, for doing this. We're just so excited to have you here and we're so proud that, you know, our City Councilperson in D5 is from Greenfield and used to sit on the GCA board. So we're really grateful and proud of you. We really look forward to partnering with you as an organization. But I really want to say welcome and thank you to everybody here for coming out because we should never forget that City Council in our bar works for us. This is about the community and the more we come together and organize and participate and talk to each other and volunteer, the better we're going to be able to tell Barb and her office what we need. So I just want to put it out there to everybody today to, you know, hopefully come to GCA meetings when you can, find one of the committees that you might be interested in and join. Doesn't require a lot of work, maybe a few hours a month max, but we need to all really be together in this. So thanks again for coming today and please come join one of our committee meetings when you can. So thanks.
Great. Okay. Super. Well, yeah, so I guess let's just jump in just for, just for a few updates. So just on what we've been working on. So first of all, anybody who, who knows me, many of you do, you know, the traffic calming is very important to me, right? Street safety, that our streets are safe to walk, to bike, for our kids to cross and, you know, and just kind of enjoy our neighborhoods. We are working closely with DOMI. We have already gotten a commitment from DOMI for traffic calming this year, for traffic calming on Upper Hazelwood Avenue, you know, or Brownsville Road coming down. Those will be sort of simpler measures for, for this year. And then they're going to do a study for the whole corridor of Hazelwood Avenue. We are also pushing very hard, anyone who is at the meeting with the mayor. The GCA has also been abundantly clear that we need traffic calming essentially the whole length of Greenfield Avenue. What, uh, what I'm hoping to do there is I'd like, I'd like a community engagement process with DOMI. Anyone who's worked with DOMI pre-pandemic, you might remember that they used to do these really great meetings. They were called charrette-style meetings where instead of just, you know, logging in on a Zoom, you'd actually come to a space like this and there would be maps around where people could actually go and look and point, you know, you know, give their sort of lived experience about this part and that part as opposed to just writing, you know, long letters of feedback and whatnot. So I'm hoping that that, I'm pushing very hard for that to happen and for that Greenfield Avenue project. I think that would be a good, a good candidate for that type of meeting. So that is on the traffic calming front for the, for the immediate term. As far as, I know a lot of you, I see Junction Coalition is here. A lot of you remember the Mon Oakland Connector project that we, the mayor, Danny stopped that project and there was some money left over. At the moment that money is, is allocated to sort of improvements to existing bike infrastructure. I personally feel like we have other needs that, that can be met in the, you know, it just, well, across the district. So we are in the process, again, this is a legislative action. So I need the other members of council to go with me, but we are working on moving some of that money. One thing is to move some money to rehab the rec center in Hazelwood Bergman Rec Center, where they do a lot of after-school programming. Another is to build a playground in the 31st Ward. And if you know, that's, that's over the Glenwood Bridge in Lincoln Place area. And, and, and so that's sort of like a first step. And we're going to talk about other, other ways that we could use that funding. Perhaps also for the Greenfield Avenue traffic calming of the sea. I have to talk with DOMI because sometimes they already have budget, right? For things like traffic calming, maybe they need more, but at any rate, that's something that we're looking into. Let's see. Yeah. So another big thing that we're working on is legislation to protect our parks. At the moment, it's a little fuzzy in Pittsburgh. What is public park and what isn't? You know, what's a greenway? What's a park? And what does that mean, right? It's, it's, at, at the moment, it's fairly easy in certain areas for the city or whomever to kind of say, well, that's not real, you know, actually that's not really, this sliver isn't really a part, you know, and just kind of take park space away for other things. And, and we don't think it should be that way. So we're working on some, on drafting some legislation. It's complicated because it's zoning is involved, right? So we have to be really careful about how we're drafting the legislation. Our legislative aide, Brooke Christie, she's on her way. She's taking, she's on the bus and the bus is late. Surprised. But at any rate, so we are working on some legislation that will help basically kind of lock in, like what is park? And then once it is park, saying essentially that you can't develop on it unless it is for the, the specific benefit and enjoyment of that park, right? Like the park, the parks are for us to enjoy. They're not for whatever other purpose the city or developer, whomever might, might want to use them for. So, so those are just kind of big picture things. Infrastructure-wise, in terms of the capital budget, this is more the mayor's department. He talked about this last time. But there are plans to rebuild the Swinburne Bridge. That's the bridge that goes over the Run. That's going to be a big project. It's going to cause a lot of pain along Greenfield Avenue, I think, for, you know, for a period of time. Again, we want to work closely with DOMI, make, make sure that, that, you know, folks know exactly what's happening when, so that, you know, it's not just like one day to the next. You know, everything's torn up. There's also a P WSA project happening in the Run. That's another situation where we're going to want to, you know, work closely with PWSA so people know what's happening on their street when. And in general, there, there is an office to do that, to coordinate utilities, right? An office under DOMI, but we want to make sure that that office is communicating with us so that we can do our best, whatever it may be, whether it's a big thing or a small thing, that we can communicate with you about, you know, what's happening on, on your street on a given day, right? With that in mind, with communication, please, please, please sign up for our newsletter. You'd be surprised, but within the city, it's, it's a little bit like reinventing the wheel with a new. So we come into the office and we really don't have, it's almost like you're just starting at zero, right? You don't have anybody's contact information. So the only contact, the only way we can contact you is for you to contact us, right? And say, this is my email. This is who I am. Please let me know what's going on. So that's why it's really important to sign up for the newsletter. We'll also use that contact information for like targeted communications, right? If there's something specific to Greenfield, you know, we'll use the Greenfield folks, you know, as opposed to just blasting every, every notice for the entire district to every person, right? We'll try and be conscientious of not filling up your email that way. You can also call. Did you bring cards? Yeah. So you can grab my card. The number on my card goes to my cell phone. Okay. This is like, I'm, I'm very into open communication, right? That's, I think Katherine said it, we work for you, right? We are here to serve you. Okay? That's not to say that we're going to get everything done and immediately when you need it, but we are still here to listen. Our doors open. You have our ear all the time, right? So, you know, give me a call, give the office a call, send us an email. I also try, I, I, I do social media, right? I'm on Facebook probably more than, than I'd like to admit, but, but I do try and track the community groups, right? Like there's a bunch, there's maybe four or five different Greenfield groups. I try my best to keep my eye on those. If you use Facebook also, feel free to just send me a message through Messenger. That's fine too. Really any way that's easy, easiest for you to get in touch with us, we're fine with that. I'm not as good at Twitter. I try. I'm not on Twitter as, as much. That's not really my, my strong suit, but yeah, I'm just trying to think, am I forgetting anything?
I think you pretty well.
Any big stuff? Yeah. Yeah. Just, just to kind of know. So I mean, I just, just to sort of, we've answered, I don't know. I say like in the ballpark of 150, maybe like 150, you know, calls, emails, whatnot in the past five weeks. So we really do mean it, right? We kind of have a 48-hour turnaround time. And if we don't get back to you, please don't, you know, if, if, you know, every once in a while something will fall through the cracks. If you contact us and we don't get back to you, please, you know, contact me. Send me a text, whatever. So with that in mind, now I'd like to open it up to any, oh, I did. Oh, and also one thing I do want to mention, just because it's, it's top of mind right now. This is very recent is our, the incidents, there have been some disturbing incidences on Murray Avenue around Lilac near the Giant Eagle. Yeah. So my understanding is there have been some holdups at the ATM. And also for some of our, some of our Jewish neighbors, members of Habod of Greenfield, there have been at least two incidents, right? Yes, the two incidents of harassment of people, one incident of a father and his daughter and another of some teenagers just being harassed when, when walking to and from their homes. So I am in touch with Zone Four about that, about what we can do in the immediate term to try and get some kind of assistance. I, I don't know what that looks like. I need to talk with Commander Griffin about what that would look like. And in the longer term, we'd really love some ideas about, about how to make that, that corridor safer because we really want everybody to feel safe, right? In Greenfield, it's a great community. It's a growing community. It's a changing community and we want everybody to feel welcome and feel safe, you know, with, with Greenfield as their home. So, yeah. So again, we'll be talking with public safety. I know the GCA, there's some ideas about beautification of the street with maybe trees and things like that to make the street more inviting. There's been, we've talked a little bit about cameras and whatnot. So again, I'll have a conversation with public safety, but you know, to be continued on that. So with that, I guess I'll open up the floor.
Good evening.
Yeah.
You mentioned about the traffic calming upon Greenfield Avenue. I live right across the street in one of the four townhouses. And I know, I believe you're aware that there have been two accidents.
Yeah.
Where two cars ended up in my front yard and one on the corner, which is 786. I think this is something that, we all have experiences, I believe, that when you come up Greenfield Avenue, people, I mean, from the Rialto's coming up Greenfield Avenue. And there are people who are just driving like idiots, you know, 40, 45 miles an hour. I have my, I have my radar gun or anything like that, but you know, I'm just like wanting to get the mail or something of that sort or a newspaper or whatever, or I'm taking a walk or whatever. People are just flying out. And we've had two near misses of major catastrophe in terms of pedestrian safety. And it's something I think that needs to be addressed sooner than later.
Yeah.
I don't know if speed bumps is the answer or whatever, but I hope, I, I understand that Mayor Danny was out to take a look at this area as well. And I'm just saying, I think it's time in essence for something to be done. You can see what's happened over there. I just want to mention during, next time you're walking across the street or you're walking past the four townhouses, there is, the owner has put up like a fortress. He's got big stone rocks, you know, each, each party's front yard. Like that's going to stop something. But I give him credit for, you know, trying to, to do something, okay, on his own. But it is, it is serious and I'm sorry if I'm being a little bit.
No, no. Yeah. So, so thanks for, so this corridor especially, I always know, you know, we all have our own experiences. My, it always strikes me in the summertime. I don't know, when you have kids, right? You park on Greenfield Avenue, walk in with your kids and your cool stuff to get across the street. And it's just like, you know, you just sort of like, you know, run for your life to get across the street. And, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to live like that, right? I, I, I'm a big believer that one of the biggest threats to public safety is, is speeding cars. So this is a big priority for me. I know it's, and to be honest, it's a priority for the entire city, right? I think DOMI has gotten some 700 requests in the past year for traffic calming. It's, it's on everybody's mind. And I'll say, you know, my job as the councilperson is to help prioritize those things for the district. I will say, as many of you have probably driven through Squirrel Hill and they have some pretty nice traffic calming in Squirrel Hill. We had our first community meeting over there and some would say too much traffic calming in Squirrel Hill. I had some, some people were a little unhappy with their speed bumps, but, but nonetheless, I think in 15217, there are, I, I think the number is like 20 speed humps. And there are zero speed humps in 15207. And that includes the one, you know, our section of Greenfield. So Greenfield, Hazelwood, 31st Ward. From my perspective, that is where the priority lies for, for traffic calming measures. That, that, that may end up being a, a hard pill for the folks in Squirrel Hill, at least for the initial couple of years to, to swallow. But you know, that's, we've got to be equitable in how we, and how we distribute these resources. I will say that the mayor's office is also taking a, a new approach to deciding where traffic calming goes, rather than it just being kind of like a squeaky wheel where, you know, everybody on the block calls a bunch of times and that's where the traffic calming goes. They're going to try and take a more like a tiered approach. So for example, if it's a corridor where there are kids crossing to go, you know, a safe, safe routes to school corridor, that would be a higher priority than say, a second avenue or something where, where nobody's, I mean, I don't think anyone's doing traffic calming there. But so that, that would work well for you because you've got the senior center and the, and the, and the playground and the pool right here.
Also have the bus stop there.
Yeah, exactly.
And when the second incident took place and the car hit the tree, if there headed anybody at the bus stop, it was just a stroke of luck.
Yeah.
That there wasn't anybody there.
Yeah.
So again, and by the way, it will help Mayor Danny. Four townhouses are in 15217.
Yeah. Yeah. So at any rate.
We had a comment from, also. We, Melissa Hiller says, "On the note of Greenfield Avenue safety, many, many cars that park on Greenfield actually park on the sidewalk, jeopardizing pedestrian safety, especially near the pool and closer to Rialto's."
Yeah. So that is, that's, that's another issue, right? With, with, and I know that this is on lower Greenfield Avenue. A lot of folks have had their cars hit and totaled, right? By speeding cars. So again, the speeding cars is, is damaging the property. So you have people who are parking on the sidewalk where they shouldn't be parking because that blocks, you know, blocks access for, for, for folks walking and makes things generally less safe. So one thing that I am really pressing DOMI on is to use the simple, simple measures, right? Even just a painted line, right? Even just a painted line, not only does it narrow the street, which automatically slows people down, it also creates a delineation of where, you know, where you can park and where you can drive. And that, that helps people when they come flying around a corner. You know, if there's a line kind of guiding them around that curve or whatever, they're less likely to be, you know, surprised by a parked car. And hopefully that will help people park where they're supposed to and, and just slow folks down in general. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't want to make too many promises about what to do. But I am, you know, working with DOMI. I, I'm a big proponent of simple, simple, faster, right? Fast, simple traffic calming measures as opposed to sort of complex traffic infrastructure. I mean, that's great in, in large intersections, but, but, you know, just around our streets, it's almost like just, just get it done, right? Just get, get it in there. So.
I know that Greenfield Avenue is a prioritized emergency route. Does that have an effect on the options that you, that DOMI has, like speed bumps, for instance?
No, I don't think so. I had a talk with Public Safety Director Schmidt and there is this narrative that speed bumps are, you see it a lot on Facebook, that speed bumps are, you know, slow down emergency vehicles so much that it could put someone's life in danger, you know, seconds lost going to the hospital or, or whatever. Well, for one thing, there, there are speed bumps that you can, you can do speed bumps with these sort of cuts in them, right? So that emergency vehicles can pass through. And I also feel that, you know, the safety measures gained by slowing cars down in general are more than made up for in, in, you know, maybe the fraction of a second to slow down to go over a speed bump. But that said, DOMI does need to do, and they are doing, I want to give them credit. I don't want to say, they, they do need to do a better job of, for example, engaging with public safety when they're going to put in, for example, roundabouts and point wreaths, right? Now, that was just an incident where these roundabouts were put in, but the, the teams driving the fire trucks didn't realize that the roundabouts were such that you could drive over them, right? But they didn't know that. So they, you know, they get to the roundabouts and they're like, wait, what? Like we can't get through here. So that's about communication. And another thing is, I don't, I'm not sure if folks are aware, but the mayor has actually consolidated, brought 311 underneath his office. And he is working very hard and his team, Rebecca Rinallo, I don't know if, she was here at the mayor's meeting, to take community feedback like this and make sure that it's getting out and make sure that those lines of communication are open between, between DOMI in particular, right? Because DOMI touches so much, you know, they do our streets, our sidewalks, our retaining walls. You know, so, so much of what we do is, is through DOMI that, that having that conduit makes it easier for them to do their job from the engineering perspective. And, you know, while sort of leaving it up to the communications folks to, to get the information flowing back and forth.
I live on Murray and I'm speaking as someone who has been hit by a car there. The traffic that comes from Squirrel Hill on Murray, once they get past Morrfield and onto the Murray Avenue Bridge. It seems like they just fly. And then they head Flemington and keep going. And the signs say 25 miles an hour.
Yeah.
But they're going 40 or 50. And there's no stop sign at Flemington, for one thing. Then welfare, as you're coming up from Bitchwood Boulevard, the stop sign's on a telephone pole, but it's not at the corner.
Okay.
So the cars come up, stop, but they're not up to the corner yet. So they'll say, okay, I stopped. And they'll come up and make a turn. And meanwhile, someone on Murray, we've had like two or three accidents this summer there.
Okay. Okay.
That pole, the stop sign needs to be moved up to the corner, taken off the telephone pole.
Okay.
And put right at the corner, a regular, just stop sign.
Okay. Great. We're taking, Addie's taking notes, so I don't worry. I'm not just nodding.
And our other concern is about the, the camera at Lilac and Murray. There's a big camera that's up Lilac, but I don't know whether it works or what, but the police are always coming into the Greenfield convenience store.
Yeah.
They come in, they use our cameras that we have from the store to check on things.
Okay.
But I don't, we can't get everything with our stuff because the Smokey Brothers store blocks, wall blocks off going up Murray Avenue past, you know, the jeweler and the pizza places and everything.
And the lights is on.
Yeah.
Lights is on the way down on the street.
Yeah. At that intersection, it's more like brighter lights.
Yeah. Lighting is an issue in, in lots of neighborhoods there. So there, there is some money in the 2023 budget to kick off an LED lighting project. Again, that's not something that's going to happen right away, but, but that is in the works. The, the mayor is well aware of lots of neighbors, you know, citywide, where better lighting would, would help make things a little safer for the street.
So just to be clear, you're curious if that camera at Lilac and Murray is functional or operational or if it's a public safety camera?
I don't know what it is.
Yeah. That's the case.
Yeah. Great.
And the other, another question from Zoom.
Yeah.
April Fisura, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, says, "I've had one neighbor lose her house and another at risk because her rental is being sold. Both are single females and older middle age. Housing affordability supply slash demand study would be good. This is why I support funding a neighborhood plan. Hazelwood Initiative is a good model of staff working to keep people in their homes."
Yeah. So, you know, affordable housing is a very big topic across the city. And it's, unfortunately, it's also becoming an issue here in Greenfield. I'm sure that you've all seen rents are skyrocketing. There are programs that now, one thing is that we are putting.
might be able to benefit, yeah, Carissa, you want to mention?
If I'm not, we know in your lowering the barrier to entry really helping out the community fund and that seven hundred dollars. And, and, and Greenfield's not part of like an opportunity there for that issue, but
That's a good question, I'll have to get back to you on that, I'll have to get back to you, yeah. Just um, whether, whether, uh, wha- what the, what the um, what the level is for to, to get assistance from the housing opportunity funds.
When you took the question, when you get that, um, the first link from U R A.
Uh-huh.
Did you put it out there because there are enough people?
Yes, yes, yeah, absolutely.
And the income level, whatever.
Yeah, that'll be, that they'll have that, it's um, it, it, it's, it's fairness, but, and it's not, it's um, it's a, how should I say this? It's within range of, you know, like, it, you don't have to, to have no money at all, right? Like, it's, it's a pretty reasonable range, like folks who, with a family of four would be, I mean, I, I don't want to just, you know, throwing numbers, but that, you know, are working and have the, but might not be able to have the, the down payment they need to buy a house, so. Yeah.
I just want to be really explicit about that, so sharing information about this kind of program, for example, is exactly the kind of information you're gonna be putting out in your newsletter, right?
Yeah.
So if people sign up for that, that's where they can get this.
Right, right, we'll also try to do on Facebook too, you know, we, we do, you know, we, we want to use social media and stuff, but yeah. So, and the newsletter, I don't know if everybody got, so we did send out a paper newsletter, um, that uh, is expensive. So uh, we um, we, I, I initially thought, oh, let's do that every month and that way, but it's like, that's, that's, it's prohibitively expensive. So please, if you got the paper newsletter, um, sign up, right? Sign up for the email newsletter, if you have um, um, uh, neighbors or whatnot that, that don't do emails, um, let me know, we, maybe we can figure out another way uh, to connect with them, but.
Sorry, I would just wanted to share too, that the draft from the U R A has the um, the upper limit is at eighty percent of the area median income. Um, and I would have to look up, I think that that is around sixty-four thousand, so it'd be a little lower than that for annual income with adjustments made for family size.
Yeah.
So they're going by the AMI.
Yes. Uh, and also, I just wanted also say, I know that sometimes not making ends meet can be really difficult and, and uh, challenging to either admit that or if you do know that a neighbor is needing assistance, our office is happy to keep that confidential. And if any of these programs have a barrier of application in terms of time or effort put into it, please contact our office so that we can find community resources that might be able to assist our neighbors. It's far more important to us that the neighbors are taken care of by the programs that we have in place than it is that uh, they, they have to continue to come up against barriers.
Yeah, and, and City Council actually has specifically for, in, in the same way uh, that, that is specifically for connecting people with resources, right? We have a resource in City Council that works for all nine offices and that, that is, his name is Rick Moody. He's really great, very nice, and that is his job, is to help connect folks with, with, because there's so many resources around Pittsburgh, right? It's, but sometimes it can be a little hard to, to know exactly what's out there. Um, so, yeah, please, again, reach out to us, that's, that's what we're here, we're here to, to, we're here to make navigating the city and all these things um, easier for, for residents.
Speaking of that, you know, my other, what, near complaints, which I brought up earlier, so I'll put that aside.
Yeah.
Um, so this other issue that I've already talked to you about, but that I think a lot of other people also have is with P L I.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if, if anyone's had some issues with them in terms of, like, you're trying to make some improvements to your house or your property and they just throw every barrier in your way. Um, I had like this massive retaining wall that was failing and it took me probably like three years to get it addressed because, partially because of P L I.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I also had to pay like a couple thousand extra dollars because somebody didn't know what they were doing and told me that I had to get like this insurance that I didn't need to have for the project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and trying to interact with them is very difficult. Um, I found out later that I should have actually hired somebody to manage that process because there are people out there who are making a living doing that.
Yeah.
And it just seems kind of ridiculous. Um, so I guess like my question is, like, how can we, how can we improve residents, uh, you know, communication with P L I and how can we make it easier for just like regular people?
Yeah.
Who can't afford to hire someone to manage their relationship with P L I.
Right.
Like, how can we make it manageable for people to work with them and make improvements to the property?
Yeah, um, so I will say, we, we've talked with P L I and um, they are.
Was P L I?
Oh, sorry, sorry, permits, licenses and inspections, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, um. They are well aware of the issue, uh, and they, they are working on it as well. I believe they have two, was it two that she said, additional staff members now to deal specifically with residents, you know, resident home, home improvements. So they launched an online system, uh, which is great if you're a landlord or, you know, or somebody who's doing work all the time, so you just kind of know how to do this stuff, right? That's a super convenient system, but if you're a resident who's never done, you know, who's doing a deck or whatever for the first time, it's not, it's, you know, you, you, it's hard to navigate, so they do have two new staff members specifically dedicated to at least a certain amount of handholding. I would say, this would be my recommendation, if you want to do anything on your property, before you do anything, please call P L I. I mean, that, 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 that seems to be a, a place where, where people get, get caught up is they start a project, they get, you know what I mean, they get going on something, whatever, and then they realize, oh no, I need a permit for that, right? And then they end up, you know, whether it's outside work that a neighbor sort of calls, calls and complains that you're doing outside work or you've done inside work and then P L I comes in to look at one thing and they say, oh, didn't you know you needed a permit for electric? But you've already put the drywall up and now you have to, you know, so. So I, I, I strongly recommend, if you have, if you're doing work on your house or any kind of work, uh, building wise, um, get in touch with P L I first and, and ask for the, for the breakdown of everything that, that you need to do, so you kind of have.
What I think is, they need to go back into the office. It's so hard on that one stop, it's hard, I built three houses and two sheds.
Okay.
I had more problems with two sheds than I did three houses.
Yeah.
And it's this back and forth, you know, and, and, no, that's not our department, that's licensing, that's, that's uh, Domi, that's, when it, what, when I first started building these houses, you were able to go downtown and stand by mine, stand at a counter and say, can you help me out, and it worked. Now this online stuff with, you know, this guy sitting there while you hear his cat crying, you know, come on, you know, this is a business, help me, you know?
Yeah.
It's just so cumbersome, just go back to work, get that counter opened up.
Well, and I also thought, like, they weren't communicating internally because, I mean, I was passed over to like several different offices in the city that all had separate processes. And I didn't even know that I had to do that initially because the online system didn't tell me to do it.
Right.
And so it's just like, and like the insanity, like, so I added a city side lot to my property and it technically doesn't, didn't have an address anymore because the house wanted burned down. And so they weren't gonna issue me a permit because that didn't have an address. Um, and so then I had to do like a whole separate application to, so that that could be called thirty-eight Alexis Rear. Um, and you know, it's, it's just, it's absurd, it really is. So it just, it felt like, you know, that scene from It's Always Sunny in Philadelphia where like Charlie, like, you know, tying all the strings all over the whiteboard, I mean, like that, that's what like it felt like to me, so, yeah.
It's the worst. I actually had a meltdown in the office, my son's a fireman. They called the firemen because first responders, they said, that's my mother. You know, like, what did you do to her? I could, my blood pressure's just going up thinking about how bad the system is.
They need to go back to work. If, if you do find yourself, again, like, as a, you know, we're, we're sort of a, a backup, right? If you do find yourself just, you know, up to your ears and frustration and, and whatnot, you know, give us a call, we'll see what we can, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do whatever we can to try and help, um, help, um. I, 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 I believe that government organizations should work together, it doesn't always, and that's, it's not a, but you know, sometimes it's hard, you know, the right hand and the left hand, um, but uh, we will do what we, what, whatever we can to, to bring, you know, you know, even if it's just sending an email and being like, you know, hey, person at Domi and person at P L I, both of whom my constituent has talked to, can you guys figure this out, you know? Um, so we, we're happy to do that, we're happy to help wherever we can.
There's a lot of new staff through the past two years.
Yeah.
There's been a very high turnover and it depends on what staff members interpretation is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I will, also just, just since we're on P L I, um, because this is, um, I, I, I learned this too, is sort of the criteria for abandoned properties. Uh, there are so many abandoned properties around the city, um, that in terms of demolition and everybody wants, you know, the, the property at the, you know, that's e- everyone has a house in their immediate area that they would love to see torn down, so it's sort of, uh, what, a- as far as demolition, the house has to be an immediate danger, right? To either the house next to it or people walking down the street, um, to, to, and, and, and those high priority ones are the ones that are slated for demolition, um. Uh, so it, you know, unfortunately, if there's a house that's just sort of an eyesore, uh, that probably isn't uh, on, on the, and, and, and bumping, bumping properties up that list is my understanding is sort of neck, next to impossible, right? P L I is pretty fixed in that because they want to address the emergency ones, right? They're the ones that are an actual safety hazard first. Um, uh, there is, uh, we, a, a big investment has been made, I'd say like seven million dollars into the land bank. Uh, we are, uh, so the city is sort of relaunching the land bank, uh, has new leadership um, uh, with, you know, that are very excited about, about actually turning over some of these abandoned properties and, and doing something, you know, to, to, to get them back on the tax rolls, et cetera, whatever, whatever state they may be in, so um, we uh, we're working closely with them as well. Uh, because we want to, I, I want to make sure that District Five is, e- even if it's pilot projects, right? I, I want us to be, I want us to be the pilot, you know, so I want us to be the pilot project. So if there's some land bank thing that they want to try out, I want to raise, raise a hand for District Five, like, yeah, try it over here, whatever, whatever you can do. Sally Stadleman? So she, I believe she works for the U R A now, right? Like, her email address is a U R A address.
S P, S P A D L E. So, so it's D E O.
D E O, yeah. And I am, I think, yeah, I think that's right. So, any other questions?
Or, thanks for the, um, uh, salutations for, for, for your, for your public safety.
Yeah.
And you mentioned Zone Four and it, and it hit me that, you know, we have a lot of um, a lot of our neighbors are police officers and so forth, and if you talk to Zone Four police officers, um, this is not a hyper Greenfield question, but we're an extension of the Core as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're really concerned about staffing.
Yeah.
As we know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's heartbreaking to me, um, I've done a lot of lunches, a lot of business on the south side and downtown Pittsburgh, and I have clients now who won't come, they feel unsafe.
Mm-hmm.
And um, that breaks my heart. Uh, I don't, I don't want to see that if I meet somebody at Hops or Big Gims, or they love to come as well, it's an institution. I just wonder what your office is, give us an update, reassure us that um, council is doing whatever they can to shore up the police department, to make sure staffing is at levels where it should be.
So, um, right, so we actually just had a briefing from the Fraternal Order of Police. It was very uh, interesting, very eye-opening, um, right now they are in negotiations with the mayor's office. Um, as far as staffing, so my understanding is that right now they are at, I want to say um, what was it, was it eight thirty about? They would like to get up to nine forty, that's what they, I think, I think that's about nine forty, nine fifty, that's what they go. I always kind of assume that stuff's kind of in the middle, right? So that maybe it'll be like nine hundred might be like the place where, where, you know, um, right now, there's an issue with recruitment, right? So it's not even necessarily a funding issue as, as the, the recruits just aren't there, right? To, to, to enter into the force, um, my understanding, the mayor, I believe, has started a new class, so, so they're, they're doing what they can. Um.
Even if that, the classes are long, I'm sorry, the classes, you know, they're not gonna start in six days. They're gonna be six months.
Yeah. One interesting thing, so I, I'm always kind of looking for, again, like, listening in as someone who is not an expert on, on, on policing necessarily, I'm, I, you know, I like to listen to conversation, and one thing that I heard which really jumped out at me um, in this, in this conversation we had uh, with the F O P, uh, was that, um, currently, uh, if you, if you call in for, say, for, for a non-urgent issue, let's say you, a lawnmower was stolen out of your shed or your car was broken into and someone took something out of the, you know, I don't know, whatever, some money out of the glove box or something like that. Um, if you want a police officer to come to your house and take a report, they have to, they're obligated to, and that, um, um, and, but we do have something called the TRU, it's the, the, the telephone response unit. You do not have to have an officer come to your house, right? You can, you can have, you can just give a telephone report, then you can get the information, whatever you need, if you need it for insurance or whatever, that also gives the information to them, so like if there's break-ins down the street, you know, they can see a pattern or whatever. Um, that frees up, you know, because I mean, when we think about it, we do have officers are, are highly, highly trained, right? And uh, so it's not necessarily a good use of their time to come to your, you know, to come to answer something that is non-urgent, right? And that, so, so that's just something to think about, um, as far as, as um, legislating that or mandating that, I, I don't know where we are on that, I, I would be for that because I'm also, as folks here know, I am, I am also into reducing the number of, of unnecessary interactions between citizens and police because things like that can go, you know, can go wrong unnecessarily, right?
But, but, who's two in the morning?
Yeah.
This, what, this is what you're talking about. Um, my dog started barking, someone was pounding on my door in the morning, I'm like, oh my god, someone's trying to come and kill me, you know?
If you feel in danger, that's, yeah, that's different.
Kids and they, and then they threw eggs at the door and I woke up the next day and I'm like, oh god. So I called and they're like, well, you can't, um, we're not gonna send an officer unless you need one, I'm like, I don't care, it's fine.
Yeah.
But I did have a number for a report.
Right. That's, that's the T O, that's the.
They grabbed them, I just wanted them to come and clean it, so I have a report to refer to, you know, technically, so.
Yeah, yeah, so at any rate, that, that, that seems like one way, right, to, to sort of free up our, our officers, at least in the short term, like what can we do, right? What can we do as citizens is, is, you know, you, use law enforcement wisely, understand that they are highly trained, they are overworked and um, you know, sort of keep that in mind, um, in, 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 in your interactions with them. So, um, uh, another thing, I don't know, this was, I'll, I'll just bring it up because it, it was um, in, in the news recently. Uh, there was some talk about reviving a curfew or, or at least re-examining a, um, a nineteen nineties curfew ordinance that we have on the books. I am against that, I don't, I don't feel that, um, I, I wouldn't want my kids, you know, if, 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 if my son or daughter was walking down the street after ten P M, I, I wouldn't want them to be stopped by an officer and questioned. And I wouldn't want that for someone else's kid, so uh, that's, that's something, again, in, in terms of sort of non-urgent interactions, my feeling that i- if there is something going on that shouldn't be going on, something dangerous, whatever, just, you know, hypothetically, a group of kids doing something they shouldn't be doing, that in and of itself is a reason to respond, right? As opposed to just being out, um, but uh, but we also made, are making big investments in, um, in Stop the Violence programming, um. These are community groups, they work within communities, they're connected with the, the parents and kids. Um, and I, 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 I am work, I am working or, you know, have plans, setting up calls because I want to know what those groups are doing in District Five. So the, the Stop the Violence organizations that have, you know, organizations that have received that funding, um, that are working in District Five, I want to be connected with them, I want to know what they're doing so that, so that I can help, like facilitate that work and uh, make sure that our kids are, 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 you know, getting the connections, the sort of on-the-ground connections.
Maybe we live in a bubble and, and I, and the G C A does an amazing job with National. Maybe we live in a bubble and and I, and the G C A does an amazing job with National Night Out. Here at here at McGee, I almost said Hammer, um but um. And the police are always there, you know, we have very few incidents and that the community police up here seems really good, I think, I don't know. Um I just don't want things to get out of hand like it does in other city neighborhoods. I that that that, I think that causes anxiety in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And and I I I just want to, I think, I want to be reassured that you guys are working on that, which I know you probably.
Yeah, um one thing that, you know, that I do hear over and over from all, you know, I I go to the um the Zone Four Public Safety meetings once a month. Those are good meetings, if if um if you're interested in law enforcement, they have one at the J C C, there was this one this past Thursday. Um, oh, there's. Oh, yeah, this is great, there's a flyer, they're doing an E M S training on February ninth, definitely grab that flyer. So that that's very good, that's going to be a training that shows you how to recognize a stroke and, you know, do uh C P R and things like that. That'll be great, that'll be a great um session, so please take the flyer for that. Um but one thing that they do say over and over is, if you see something, say something, right? That does, again, like I said, you can telephone report, you can, it doesn't have to be urgent. But, you know, the more people know that we are looking out for each other, right? Like, take the incident um um on 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 Murray by Lilac, right? We have a mother, uh sorry, a father and daughter being harassed, right? Say some, say, you know, call, say something, that that kind of stuff needs to be reported because it also shows, I think. I mean, I don't know, call me Pollyanna, but I think that shows that that we care, right? That we care about our community, that, you know, this, you know, walking by and just letting something happen and pretending like you don't see or whatever. Um just gives a sense of of a community that doesn't really care and that that leads to the isolation that so many of us are feeling, especially after. The pandemic and whatnot, yeah.
Oh, two questions or comments?
Yeah.
I heard in the radio today that there's money that's available to repair the steps of Pittsburgh.
Uh huh.
What will be done about the steps from the Run up to the back of Greenfield School? Uh being repaired or upgraded? Also, today's mail, additional learning about today's meeting. I also got to notice that the F N B branch in Murray and Lilac will be closing on April nineteenth. You will have to go to an F N B office a mile away in Squirrel Hill.
Yeah.
Or in Homestead on the Eighth Avenue. Neither place has a drive through window, which is a convenience for those with accessibility problems.
Yeah.
First, the P N C office across the street closed, forcing you to go to a branch in Homestead or in Squirrel Hill. Was the city council or the mayor made aware of this? It's less access for Greenfield residents and causes additional traffic on Murray Avenue and on a Homestead Grace Bridge. Which are crowded enough. I realize that corporations can do whatever they want for their own reasons, money. But this adversity affects the community.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I just heard about that today as well. Um uh Mike Sir Lucky texted me and said, did you hear about this? So no, I I was not informed, I don't know about the mayor's office, but so that that is news to me today. Um I'm going to go over and talk to them, I don't know if they're going to keep an A T M. Uh you know, like P N C has has an A T M. Um at the very least with the A T M, you can deposit checks and that kind of stuff, but you know, you you don't have the teller service, that's that's true. Um yeah, I'll I'll go in and talk with them about what, uh but you're right, it is it is tru- it is difficult, right? With 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 private organizations like that, you know, if if they close, they close. Um but yeah, I I will go in, I I have that on my list, I just heard about that today. As far as the steps, um there is seven million dollars uh for city steps. None of our steps are on it, unfortunately. Now, we do have the steps from the Run up to Greenfield Avenue, tho- so those are steps, my kids take those steps to school. They do get repaired, like, so when they're broken, they get patched, um but those are, those steps are in fairly good condition. Um the one steps is not in this district, but sort of in the vicinity are the um. The Fraser Street steps, that I believe they go from Fraser down to uh Lake Bates. To get you from South Oakland down to to the Second Avenue corridor, so those those steps are on the. On the list of of steps that will be will be addressed with this initial seven million dollars. So, um.
Yeah, the the steps is in question, the ones that go from, I think Long Ivandale behind Greenfield School. We have those removed at the request of the the community. That when a young girl was grabbed and brained.
Oh, I think I, that was a lot, yeah.
Yeah, they're closed, and we had hoped that they'd get removed, that they're closed.
Yeah, I think it's a safety, just like a a weird safety area, there's not lights, they're big steps. Um my kids also take the Alexis Street steps, and the steps themselves are in okay shape, they don't get really salted or anything during the winter. Um and the railing, they're in terrible condition, like if you like, bring it upon them, you could get like, you know, a huge cut, but. Um they are passable, but yeah, the other ones from like down the runs further, probably will never reopen because of that crime. So, yeah.
We're at about seven twenty-nine.
This is a big question, but I just wanted to add on to what this gentleman over here said about the uh the bank. Yeah. My understanding is that the A T M will be open, but only for a certain period of time after the branch closes. And then that will go away to like what happened with the one up here on Greenfield Avenue. Right, right. So that will. First, first. Yeah, yeah. Now, is that bank sort of going under as a bank? Is that what's happening? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't.
They're, they have that major deal for the, they're building their, they're building their national bank quarters there. Oh, it's, they're a very profitable bank.
Okay, well, let me get, let me see what I can, that's that's sort of my specialty, is like writing to CEOs and saying, what the heck? What the heck, moneybags, why are you closing our bank? Okay, I'll see what I, I'll, 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 let me look into that.
There's, we got one email this evening, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh about the Anderson Playground, for anyone that has kids that go to Anderson Playground, they will be demoing the equipment this next week. For renovation over the summer. On Engage Pittsburgh, uh for a lot of the developments like this, this is how they're doing community ga- engagement online. Uh there is an upcoming meeting, I didn't actually read, when is that?
The seventh.
On the seventh of February, regarding what those plans will be. From what I've seen of the the plans for that playground, I think. There was resounding interest in maintaining dinosaur playgrounds, so there's different ways that they're incorporating it, the plans were really interesting, so. Yeah, please contact them, but I wanted to make sure everything.
Uh speaking of playgrounds, something for updates about the Run Playground and when they plan to get started on that?
Yeah, so I can, um uh I I think they're looking at ma- maybe this summer, like the spring to get started and hopefully the summer. But yeah, we're we're working with with Andrea, she's put in the order, so Teresa? Oh, sorry, this Teresa, not that Teresa.
Do you have, you know, upstairs, like from the thirty-five hundred block, five East Wood, like up to the bridge are included in that step plan?
And the only ones that are that are anywhere adjacent are those are those Oakland steps.
Okay, yeah, they restarted on it, I wasn't sure if that was part of it or not.
Oh, well, maybe that was something, I mean, if if they're usable steps, I I think they're, like, they do, I mean, I just know from our steps.
They'll be, I mean, they've been redoing them.
Yeah, okay, okay, so maybe that one's like already already in the works, you know, I I can look into that though.
Yeah, okay, well, I heard dinosaur playground, so I thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are they donating that equipment, do you know, or?
Oh, I have no idea, I don't know, it's pretty broken, I mean, I don't know.
Curious, I'll take the old fence or.
Go house, yeah, yeah.
Um but my question was, um to piggyback off of Michael Farley. The increase in crime is like directly correlated with the economic instability that we're facing. Is there any high city level leadership conversations that are happening that you're looking forward to this year? That we can position our residents so that they don't have to be settled.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, that is, that is a a high priority for the administration, uh you know, whether it's affordable housing, there's also food justice. You know, these things are all on the table, right? This the these things, these are the topics that are the most important, I would say, stop the violence for this administration. Uh the way uh that I look, the way I look at the sort of structure of this of city government. Is that, you know, you have Mayor Ganey up here, and he's got lots of programs and and, you know, great ideas and funding. But if, you know, if that doesn't get cascaded down at the district level, then it's not necessarily going to work, right? So so that's why I I want this office to kind of function as a conduit for that. So that, you know, if if there's something going on up here, if there's money, you know, funding, whatever, that that's coming coming through, coming down to, you know. For example, youth sports organization, you know, that 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 um. That that type of funding is getting here and that also, because sometimes it's really hard to actually access that, those those types of funds. Like community development block grants, for example, are now um, which are available for seniors. They're available for organizations in in um certain neighborhoods, Hazelwood is one. But they're extremely hard to to access, right? You have to do an incredible amount of accounting, like minutia, it's next to impossible. So I want to make sure that in addition to just saying, hey, apply for this grant. That we are there and and connecting you with the right resources within the city to actually help you get those grants, right? To make sure that the paperwork is correct and that it's sent in on time, you know, because it's 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 a lot harder to take free money than it sounds.
Barb's comment um about us being all together right now is really important. I I do development for a homeless shelter, a large one, uh in East Liberty. And our food pantry numbers are up twelve hundred percent. Um with the price of eggs, with all these, like this economic instability you're talking about, inflation, people get nervous. There is help, but people need to know where to go, and that's why juxtaposed to that crime issue. It's 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 sort of anxiety prone right now, you know, we don't want people to go into that gentleman's store with a gun and so forth. Because of paranoia, there's a lot of, oh, Pittsburgh's a very generous city, our block grants from the city have been wonderful. And they have been in this neighborhood as well. Um we could always use more money, but um but you're right, that that's why nerves are a little frazzled, then you pick up. Watch the news today, and they're talking about, oh, um this is the year for recession, we don't know that just yet. But but you're right, that it causes stress.
Thank you for mentioning the medical debt forgiveness as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so uh we um uh city council just passed. A bill to, there's, there there is a um an organization called R I P Medical Debt, where they buy debt from from. Hop, you know, hospitals, healthcare providers, and for like pennies on the dollar. And um the idea then is to relieve medical debt for for people living in the city of Pittsburgh. So that's, you know, we just w- passing that, but it's it's in the works, you know, we're sort of figuring out the details with that. Um there's a procurement process and whatnot that needs to happen, but that that is something to, you know, that that is at least some relief that is coming as well. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is kind of a strange left turn, totally changes subject, but I'm going to ask this question on behalf of a number of folks in the G C A. And a number of neighbors that I've had this conversation with. Uh Greenfield is fine, you know, and the businesses are fine, they're not empty. But I think a lot of us would like to see them be more vibrant and more diverse, and we'd really like to invest in the business community here. So I think it's kind of more of like a request and just to let you know, something that the G C A is thinking about.
Yeah.
We would like to attract new and more and more types of business to the neighborhood. So if you also see any kind of programming around that.
Yeah.
We would definitely be a neighborhood that's interested in it.
Okay, yep, super. And I also want to say, and I say this at all the meetings, if, you know, we, we really want to connect with you. So if if you have, if you if you have an organization, or even if you're doing a a a block party or something like that. And you want someone from the, from our office to be there, let us know. I mean, we can't necessarily come to every single one, but but we love that, so, I mean, I love that stuff, especially in Greenfield, right? You know, um but um, you know, let us know, we we we'd like to come, we'd like to come and say hello and. And really help support however we can. Yeah.
Um so, you know, that I love talking on water, and I know you have been uh being a advocate in protecting the Run and your neighbors. But just, I would love your help continuing to put pressure on P W S A. Um because I am really worried that the large type project that they're proposing for the Run. Uh may not address funding in its entirety. And in their current plan, they're taking our neighborhood as a priority area and off their radar. And so um water issues that are affecting all their constituents um may not be considered priority anymore. Because of a project that's not happening, so it's twenty thirty-six.
Yeah.
And so um it means that we might not have a lead for you, so additional pressure of P W S A is the second part of that. It's something that even like my little organization, Non Water Project, really can't do, is keeping an eye on the fact that every single one of us got a brand new bill this year. From P W S A that charges a stormwater fee. And so I paid my forty-five dollars, and I'm sure that you paid your forty-five dollars. But did U P N C pay thirty dollars? And like those type of stormwater um fees, the whole point of them was to be equitable. So that large nonprofits who have parking grounds and the huge garden shed rooms that are then flooded, you.
Mm-hmm.
Um paid it, and I'm not quite sure how to keep track of that, and it feels like that has to come from someone over there for them, so.
Yeah.
Hope that would be really nice, just making sure that they're they're doing their job too, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, absolutely, I was just walking this morning and I looked over at Panther Hollow Lake, and it's just sort of permanently. Blooded, like up above the steps and, you know, um so, yeah, I'm I'm aware of that and I have my, please keep me on it too. Yeah. Yeah.
Just real quick, um how are you able to say what the administration is working on as far as grants? Or other projects that were like our area? So that we can actually become more involved in it, or that we can become um more advocates?
Yeah, that's interesting, so with the grant, uh the grant making, that's something that I would like more transparency into.
Yeah.
Uh specifically with the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. So um in the past, uh and and even just since being in this seat for a month and change, right? Um I've run into two separate incidences where Domi has, is embarking on a project. And it's a project, but I won't even get into specifics because it's happening, but it's a project that really isn't a priority, right? It's sort of like a head scratcher, like, why are you doing that? And the response has been, oh, well, we have a grant, right? We have a grant for that, and and if we don't do it, we'll lose the grant. And it's like, okay, I mean, you don't want to leave money on the table, I get that, right? Like, there's a great, sort of free money, so to speak, you don't want to leave it on the table, so we're doing this project that nobody really needs. You know, just because we have a grant. So I would like to see more transparency, and 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 these these grants do come across the council table. So going forward, um I I can, I can, I I am committed to when a grant, you know, comes to actually asking questions like. Wait, wait, before we apply for this grant, what is this for? And are we, you know, and and are we applying for grants for things that we actually need as opposed to, you know? And are, is there community input into these grants and, you know, because that grant funding is limited, right? Or and it comes from different places, and we have a grant office whose time is limited, so we want to make sure that they are using their time wisely. And and really going for the grants that are going to make the most difference for us, right?
Are you, I just wanted to be clear, are you talking about grants from the city of Pittsburgh to residents or the city organizations? Or grants that the city of Pittsburgh is receiving from federal funding or other sources?
Both, because a lot of these are federal sources. You don't know what's coming in and, yeah, there are some that you just really question.
Yeah, so and also in terms of grants that the city hands out, so um we actually just ran into this. Um with the community development block grants, is that historically, it's been council has its grants and the mayor has its grants. And there's not a lot of, um not to say there's a transparency, there's, you could find out what it is, but it's more just about communication. So you're not really seeing where the mayor's giving money, where council, so, you know, say, for example. You know, I give money just hypothetically to the children's museum, but then the mayor also gave a ton of money to the children's museum. Well, now the children's museum is getting like double grants. Well, now the children's museum is getting like double grants when, you know, I, I could, I could put my grant money elsewhere, right? Because I know the mayor's got that one covered. So that's really more just, I think, a coordination issue and, uh, and something that we're gonna, that, that at least for District Five, you know, and the grants that I'm looking at that we're gonna gonna try and be, be mindful of.
And also resourcing that is not being used on priority projects because they want to use that grant money. They're staffing that, that project or whatever. That's less staffing to direct towards higher priority projects.
You mean, you mean for, for grant money that the city is applying for?
No, no, the application of the grant. Like if Domi's doing a project, they've got a grant for.
Yeah.
They're.
Oh, right, right. Exactly.
Those resources are.
Right, they're contracting it out, right, exactly. Time, resources, exactly, exactly. So. Okay, well, it looks like, yeah, we're, we're creeping up on eight. So I just want to say quickly though, one last thing before we go. I really just, you know, it's sort of like, again, like a little bit, a bit like, we've been doing this now for a month and, and, and a week, a month and two weeks. This has been the best job I've ever, this has been like the most fun I've ever had at work ever in my life, right? You know, whether I'm here for a year or I'm here for longer, this, I thank you so much for entrusting me with this job. I'm so honored to represent you. Um, just sort of, you know, makes my heart swell. Um, anyway, so thank you all for coming. I really.
This meeting was great.
Great. Well, anyway, thanks. Have a good night.